I'd like to call for order. Board of Finance, Special Budget Meeting, Public Hearing, Monday, March eighteenth, two thousand twenty-four. Join me for pledge allegiance.
By virtue of allegiance, we give the flag of the United States of America. Into the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, up next, we have public remarks. Anyone might come up and speak, please, we can give three minutes. You can go to the podium. And if anyone is online, please raise your hand.
Good evening, Board of Finance and members of the town council in the audience, my name is Donald Scranton. I'm the chief of East Hampton Ambulance, I'm also a proud resident of East Hampton. Most of my family, ranging from my siblings, parents, aunts, uncles, cousins, all live in East Hampton and chose to make this their home, including my nieces and nephews, who have grown up in the school system. Several years ago, I also bought a house just around the corner from the ambulance to also grow up my family in town. I'm going to be close to both our fire department and our ambulance, both of which I serve home. I'm here tonight to show my support for East Hampton Ambulance on its request for funding in this year's fiscal's budget. The funding would ensure continued provision of exceptional patient care and quick responses in our community. Our community has many great dedicated services, whether it's our library, our senior services, our police department, Public Works, our Board of Ed. And with our town size growing, we also have improved those services. It also happened for our residents. We've been in value, the East Hampton Ambulance has been an invaluable asset to our community for seventy-one years, consistently demonstrating dedication, professionalism, and commitment to the well-being of our residents and those who also visit our town. Our highly trained and skilled emergency medical personnel have played a crucial role in numerous situations, especially when minutes or seconds matter. And often, they're a familiar face that we could help make a situation easier, holding true to our neighbors, helping neighbors' lives. Last week, our ambulance responded to a call for difficulty breathing, the patient was unresponsive. Upon arrival, our EMTs quickly determined that the patient was in cardiac arrest, started CPR with all the necessary equipment needed right away. And also, due to being a local organization, we had members respond from their homes who were also EMTs. And help during the situation. Ultimately, the crew was able to get pulses back on the patient and they were transported to a local hospital for continued care. Ensuring that the ambulance has the necessary financial resources is not just an investment in our EMS service, it is an investment for the safety and health of everyone in our community. We provide the same high-quality care to all our patients, like their family, friends, or neighbors. Quick response times can make a significant difference in emergency situations. And our ambulance has greatly improved its response times since development implementation of our new staffing model last April. Since implementation, we've consistently provided prompt and effective care to those in need, with response times being cut to an average of ten minutes and four seconds since April second, two thousand twenty-three. Additional funding would help to ensure that this new model continues to thrive, where we can continue to provide quick response times and exceptional care. Additionally, our ambulance focuses on our patients and providers, and our members, enhancing and maintaining our state-of-the-art equipment and continuous training for all our dedicated personnel. Your support will not only help us maintain our excellent service, but contribute to the overall safety and resiliency of our community. Thank you for your time, I know this is a very tough process. And I trust that the Board of Finance and the Town Council recognize the importance of supporting a local EMS service in our community and allocate the necessary funds to ensure its ongoing exceptional patient care and quick response times. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Barbara Sargent, I'm an EMR driver with East Hampton Ambulance, this is my thirty-first year with them. I also serve as what they call the events coordinator, and I'm here to make you aware of some of the events that we have been asked to stand by and or participate. We've done open houses for the public, we've visited daycares in town, we have been to the memorial school for individual classroom attendance and touch a truck events, Old Home Day, Hattie McFair, the turkey plunge, high school graduation, fire departments fireworks, health fair, we did a stuff on ambulance for the food bank. We've had visits from all the scouting committees, Memorial Day, Panther Fest. We've got a townwide CPR. Shoreline, many races. In the fall, they had a next volunteer fire department hosted a training with the LifeStar helicopter where they came and we also viewed the helicopter. We've had training with other services such as Marlboro and East Tatum. And we've also done training with the local hospitals such as Hartford, Middlesex. And each year, we have members who attend the EMS conference. This is all strictly volunteer, nobody gets one penny for this, they do it because they want to be part of the community and make them aware of what we do, this is all free, thank you.
Good evening, members of the Board of Finance, council members, Board of Education, residents, and the community. My name is Akatsuna Chulite, and I'm a proud resident of East Hampton. I absolutely love our tight-knit community here and deeply value the exceptional service that our local emergency services provide. But tonight, I am here to show my support for the East Hampton Ambulance Association and ask for your support of the organization as you prepare the fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five budget. While I'm not a member of ambulance myself, I do know many of the wonderful and skilled, compassionate, and knowledgeable personnel within the organization. I have personally witnessed their dedication to our community over the years, whether through their timely and effective response to calls at all times of the day and night, or through numerous hours of being out in the community, getting to know our residents, just like they did at the recent construction event this past Saturday. As you prepare the budget for the next fiscal year, I do hope that you show your support for the East Hampton Ambulance Association and approve their request for funds to ensure the continuation of their effective service to our community, thank you so much.
Hi, good evening. My name is Madison Star, I'm the Assistant Chief of East Hampton Ambulance. I've lived in town since I was born and I've been part of the ambulance association for the past five years. I'm honored to voice my support for East Hampton Ambulance being in the budget this year as the additional funding would help us continue to provide the best care to the members of our community. The new staffing model that's been implemented has allowed us to continue providing excellent care to our community and a quicker response, truly emphasizing the difference time can make in emergency situations. To prepare the budget for this next fiscal year, I hope your support and approving funds for East Hampton Ambulance, thanks.
Thank you.
My name is Don Donnelly, I've been with the ambulance for about twenty-two years, and I can tell you that, you know, since we, last year, when we got a bunch of money from the town, our response time has gone way down, our coverage of the town has gone way up, we have almost no one open shifts now. It's a difficult problem to try to get people to do what we do for a little on our money. And this problem is that every town or state, Weatherfield is about to close their ambulance service. Newington has the same problem, everybody has the same problem. And the only ones who have solved it are people who were able to get some town financing. We don't get enough money from the state for each call, we don't have enough calls to buy you to make it up to run the whole year, so. We need whatever help you can give us, and, you know, I hope that you understand that the service that we provide is needed and it's appreciated by the people in the town. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm David Shulman, I'm a resident of Westbury. I've been the treasurer of the ambulance association for about ten, twelve years. And you have always provided lots of numbers. And I'm not going to go through them with you, but certainly if you have any questions at all, call me or email me at davisuburbanop.com and I'll be glad to help you. Basically, we're looking for the amount of half of what our expected loss will be in next year. The remaining half of that loss, we can make up with some of the liquid assets that we have. And hopefully, we'll be able to do that for the next couple of years. If you have any questions, please let me know, I'd be glad to help you. Thank you.
Hi there, my name is Kim Danaher. I am an EMT with East Hampton Ambulance for approximately five years. I also serve on Hattie McFire Department. I am a resident of Hattie Neck. We recently had a call in Hattie Neck that was a cardiac event. And by having our ambulances staff fully, we were able to respond to this call and make a significant difference in this man's outcome. And I really feel that it's because we are being staffed so well that, you know, we've been able to staff ambulances even two at a time sometimes. We are just really turned around in this past year. And I just wanted you guys to know that other communities that we do respond to are very supportive of this and are very happy. You know, the care is just, you know, I mean, it's just amazing what we've done in the past year, so I just really hope that you guys will consider that and understand where we're coming from and that we are just want to give the best care that we can in a timely manner. So, I thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Cindy Gray, I've lived in East Hampton since nineteen eighty. And I appreciate our ambulance service, but I'm here to talk about the senior center budget. We lost our director of this twenty-four years of service last week, she decided she had retired, was going to retire. I'd like to make sure that the budget for the senior center doesn't fall through the cracks. Joanne worked diligently with part-time staff. And it's going to be very difficult to replace her. And there's a lot of information going around, whether it's true or not, we don't know about whether these social services in the senior center are going to be combined. We definitely do not need to let the budget for the senior center fall through the cracks because we need people there to serve our community, we have a lot of seniors in this town. And we have one of the best senior centers in the state. And if you haven't been there, you should come and find out. Also, we have an old bus and we have a part-time driver. We do not service our seniors in the same way as other towns. If you go to East Granby, you see their senior bus around town, constantly everywhere, all day, five days a week, so. Please give attention to the senior budget because we're all getting older, thank you.
Hello, my name is Kev Mojo, I live at Twenty Summit Street. As a devoted parent, active community member, business owner, and recently appointed member of the Arts and Culture Commission, I come before you today with a multifaceted perspective on the crucial matter of this year's budget allocation. This year's, last year's contentious budget regarding proposed cuts to our educational system underscored the importance of adequately funding our schools. As a parent of two young children, aged five and seven, currently enrolled in kindergarten and first grade, I understand firsthand the critical role education plays in shaping our children's futures. Having volunteered in their classrooms and witnessed the dedication of our educators, I can attest the indispensable value they bring to our community. And I encourage anyone questioning the significance of teachers to volunteer in school. Their presence is always needed and deeply appreciated. In addition to my role as a parent, I am also a business owner in town and have recently been appointed to the Arts and Culture Commission. Through my commercial interior design experience, I have the knowledge and privilege of working on projects including K through twelve schools and public libraries. My experience in architecture school, where I spent years learning to observe and analyze human behavior and reactions to the built environment, has given me a unique perspective on the importance of creating conducive learning environments. I have seen firsthand how the design of educational spaces impacts student engagement, motivation, and overall well-being. Moreover, my involvement in the Arts and Culture Commission will underscore the interconnectedness of education, art, and culture in our community's fabric. Both sectors are integral to our town's identity and contribute significantly to the vibrancy and its growth. As a result, I am deeply committed to advocating for policies and budgets that prioritize the advancement of education, arts, and culture in our town. In conclusion, I urge the Board of Education, sorry, Board of Finance, to consider the comprehensive impact of budget decisions put by the Board of Education on our community's well-being and prosperity. Let us prioritize the future of our children by fully supporting the Board of Education's budget, advocating for the necessary resources, and embracing initiatives that enhance education, arts, and culture in our too. Thank you for taking into consideration.
Thank you. If anyone else, is there anyone online?
People online, if they could raise their hand or allow them.
We don't have anything.
Yeah. So, next up is budget presentations. And I guess, I tell manager, you're up first.
You want me to go first?
Sure.
I just want to take another hour and a half or so and run through the details of the budget. But in all seriousness, and it's time to advance here, I will spend a few minutes, I just want to do a couple of things. One, I want to talk a little bit about the general operations of the budget, the general government side, if you will, of the ledger. That's going to include not only operations but capital and debt. And then I want to talk a little bit about the budget on the whole. The superintendent will talk more details about education, but I want to talk a little bit about budget on the whole. So, I will take a few minutes and go through that presentation and just as I said, talk a little bit about from a
It's the oldest one in here, it's going to help you with technology.
Oh, it's all the way.
Yeah.
As I said, I want to take a few minutes and talk a little about the budget from, you've got all the screens on.
We need a twelve-year-old here now.
I'm telling you, don't we have a high school student?
Thank you.
I'm fine, I'm good.
Everybody should be able to see it on the screen somewhere around them, what I'm going to run through. Like I said, general government overview, capital, debt, and then the budget on the whole, and then, as I said, the superintendent will talk. Board of Education budget, as I'll remind you all, this is something that those of you that are around, all know. A budget is created in coordination with all of the departments of the town. Staff creates their proposals and concepts for the future, we talk about those. And ultimately, that gets funneled down into the budget that we end up, that I end up presenting to you. It attempts to look into the future, not only for the next fiscal year, but the long term as well. Maintains, has a focus on maintaining what we're doing today, providing the same services and programs as we do now and into the future. Tonight, I want to talk a little bit about the ongoing overall discussion about public safety and how that's been included in the budget, you'll see the discussion related to the East Hampton Ambulance Association that you heard earlier. We'll talk a little bit about the police department and changes in the fire department. We'll talk a little bit about what I'm proposing for the senior center as well, we'll talk a little bit about some proposed changes I've made to support some water efforts in the community. A little bit more detail, I want to talk about the increases in public safety are going to account for about forty-one percent of the proposed changes to the town general government budget. Another significant portion, about forty-two percent, is really driven by people. Contractual obligations related to various wage increases and other wage increases and other costs associated with the human beings that do all of the work that the town gets done in an annual fiscal year. We'll talk a little bit about debt service later on, I was pointing out that in general, the bond costs are generally flat right now this year, as I mentioned in our discussion here last year. We paid off some leases, so we've got a little bit of a reduction there, an overall reduction in debt service. Capital Committee at this point has made a recommendation to this body on its capital improvements plan. As I note, that calls for a fairly significant increase, the overall plan hasn't changed, it's really how we're financing that plan. The American Rescue Plan Act funds have gone away. We consumed all of those, so there is a significant one-point-one-million-dollar proposed increase in the cost of capital next year. So, let's talk a bit about where those major changes are, a little bit more detail. Talk briefly about public safety, you can see that that accounts for about three-hundred-and-forty-three-thousand of the proposed increases. One-hundred-and-seventy-three-thousand and change of that is associated with the ambulance association and their request to support, if you will, half of their loss for the anticipated upcoming year. Additionally, the police department has requested an additional police officer, you see that's about one-hundred-and-fifteen-thousand. Last summer, the town council changed the stipend payment, it basically doubled the stipend payment for volunteers who provide service mostly in the fire department, but also in the ambulance association. Although, as you've heard, alluded to this evening, the number of ambulance association volunteers is somewhat reduced in favor of paid employees. Nevertheless, the cost of that is showing at about fifty-five-thousand in the fire department, that's double that stipend. Talking a little about those salary increases, you'll see there that about four percent of the overall salary costs increase in full-time employees, a little over two-hundred-thousand dollars. Again, that's a general wage adjustment, as well as other adjustments due to people moving through their their wage scale as well, we've made some adjustments in some non-contract wages to meet the market a little bit better. Part-time employees see an increase as well, they're not only in there is the upcoming change again to minimum wage, that's now happening every January, but also some adjustments in the senior center related to transportation. Pension and retirement goes up, as it does almost all the time. Although, we're seeing a little bit of a shift in our costs, so we have a defined bench, a defined benefit program, so your typical pension program. The actuarial increase for that is about sixty-nine-thousand dollars of our total, our total payment. And then, we're having a little bit of a shift, as I said, to the defined contribution, that is, we make an amount of a payment, we match a payment in employees' individual account. And they, it earns what it earns and they get paid out based on that. I alluded to public water, the town is taking on some obligations as it relates to private water service, that is, water service at private individual homes, there are some contaminants that we're having to deal with. Salts, basically chlorides and sodium, as well PFOS, so we have a few of those that are going on, we're in ongoing discussions with the state. Ultimately, those will be our responsibility to monitor and address. So, I've asked for some funding to over, to deal with that. There's two parts to this funding, there's sort of twenty-thousand dollars to handle some testing in outside professional services and twenty-thousand dollars related effectively to the salary of the Public Utilities Administrator to aid with work that is not in the town's current water systems. Senior center staffing changes, there are two items that I'm referencing here, there's a little bit of double counting, but I wanted to call this out. One is that I, you'll see that we've, I've added some funds into the senior center for an additional part-time employee there related to social services aspects of work that gets done there. And then, as I mentioned before, there's a little bit more money in for transportation support. So, all of those numbers that I count for here, notwithstanding, as I mentioned, about sixteen-thousand of a double count, is about seven-hundred-and-seventy-nine-thousand dollars or so of the, what you'll see later, about eight-hundred-and-forty-five-thousand dollars of general activity changes. There's that capital fund transfer change. Right now, that's it, projected in the, in the budget that was recommended to you by the Capital Committee of just under one-point-one-million dollars, that's a straight year-over-year increase in the total amount going there. Total amount is about one-point-eight, one-point-nine million dollars. That's service cost, here's some good news, that service costs are coming down, two-hundred-and-eighteen-thousand dollars and change. Overall, that means that the general government side of the ledger is proposed right now in the budget conversion you have in front of you to increase by one-point-seven million dollars, not an insignificant number at all. There's just some other information for you, you can see the graph over time of full-time employees. This reflects the proposed increase of a police officer. Want to take a couple of moments to just talk a little bit more detail about capital improvements, as I said there, you see about a two-point-eight-million-dollar capital improvements plan. And the breakdown for that expenditure, this is not a plan that is much higher than it was last year, it's about three-hundred-thousand and change higher than it was last year. What's really changed is funding, we'll see that on the next page. Costs associated with that plan are primarily in the Public Works Department or infrastructure area, that's roads, drainage, and those sorts of activities that we use every day. The other, another quarter is in educational facilities and some technology in education. And then the balances, as you can see, spread between culture, public works, and general government costs. There's that revenue piece again. You can see that we're using, we have some revenues coming in that we're using there, primarily, we're using funds that are left over from the middle school roof project, we're using the last of the American Rescue Plan Act dollars, the so-called ARPA dollars. As well, we're using some fund balance in the recreation program, other outside balances, but overall, the proposal is to use one-point-eight, almost one-point-nine million dollars of current tax dollars. One of the conversations we had during the Capital Committee discussions was really the history of how much the community has put away for capital improvements or has used for capital improvements off of its, off of its annual tax bill. As you can see here, it's generally around eight-hundred-thousand dollars, plus or minus. Notwithstanding, of course, that large bar to the right. Part of the conversation was that this figure really hasn't changed significantly in the last twenty-five fiscal years. And that, in that discussion, we were really kind of highlighting how that's really perhaps an issue for the community and that we really need to think about how we fund capital, how we increase our funding for capital. Because what eight-hundred-thousand dollars bought in the year two thousand is very different than what eight-hundred-thousand dollars buys in the year twenty twenty-five. So, that was part of the conversation and that is, is something for the community to consider. So that was part of the conversation and that is uh is uh something for the community to consider. Quickly on debt then, uh as you can see here, uh our debt calendar right now, our debt schedule starts to show that decrease. If I would have included twenty twenty-four on here, you'd see the twenty, or I'm sorry, twenty-three on here. You'd see twenty-four and twenty-three were pretty similar, and we start to see that decline uh as we move down in through there. We have a reduction in leases this year and we'll start to pay off pieces of our debt over time. So this is just a a quick visual for you of how that uh that calendar changes over time. This, of course, doesn't contemplate any a new debt that the town meeting might approve. Uh it's always a question, how is our debt distributed? We can see it down there in that high chart on the bottom. Almost uh about forty-six percent of it is in high school. Another big chunk, of course, in this building, and then the rest of it is spread among various other items, vehicles, uh other purchases and the like. So that gets to the sort of the end game here. Uh as you'll hear from the superintendent, the the educational expenses are about thirty-eight thou- thirty-eight million dollars rather. All in all, the total request for the budget in this upcoming fiscal year is fifty-seven million, seven hundred ninety-one thousand dollars. Uh that's an increase uh as we'll see in a moment of of three point six or seven million dollars. And there is the breakdown of how the town's dollars are spent. About a quarter of that is in in town general operations, about two-thirds of that is education. The balance of that is, as you can see, in that capital. Here's why I mentioned that three point nine million dollar increase overall in the budget year-over-year. Again, you can see the breakdown of those, of how those changes are distributed throughout the budget. The education piece, uh the two point two million there. Eight hundred and forty-five thousand for town operations. You see that reduction in debt service and that increase in the transfer to capital uh out uh transfer from taxes out to the capital improvements. Again, shows that change, really not much of a change in the ratios except for how we have debt. Before we get into the the end, the last couple of slides and talk about how uh this will have an impact on uh taxes, I want to talk a little bit about revenue. Overall, we're seeing in non-tax revenue uh an increase of about three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. That's really not a lot considering um but uh one of the changes that we're enjoying, if you will, this year is an increase in the amount that we'll get from the state in their motor vehicle tax um support. So the state made a change in the way that it was taxing motor vehicles first off in. Uh put a cap on how much we can, on the mill rate rather, for motor vehicles. It also will ultimately, I believe it starts year after this one, uh will begin a depreciation schedule as opposed to a market value uh schedule. Market value is what drove the cost of all of our cars up a couple of years ago. Uh market value is also was pulling the value of our vehicles down, and I'll talk about that in a moment. But to make up that change that's going on with the way uh motor vehicles are being taxed in the municipalities in the state, the state is granting additional dollars to make that up. So we'll have a pretty good jump there, a hundred and roughly a hundred thousand to two hundred and fifty-nine thousand this coming year, but I anticipate that that will start to dwindle again uh and those dollars will go away. The other thing I'll make a comment on, and and I suspect the superintendent will talk about this, is top-flat grants. And we'll see that a little bit coming back later. You all know that the other operating grants we get from the state, primarily education, uh have continued to drop over the years and have been static uh in these last few years. I think our education grant from the state this year increases uh nine hundred and ninety-seven dollars. There are no other numbers there, nine hundred and ninety-seven. Uh we have some uh we've kept investment income flat. You may recall that that went up. Uh we the types of investments that the town can make, which are relatively safe investments, benefited during the change in the economy. Uh and so we had a little bit more income coming off of those, and to this point, we expect that to remain uh in the upcoming years, although that's not significant amounts of dollars. Licenses and permit activities dropped from a peak that occurred uh during the pandemic uh and uh but are remaining relatively flat and are are consistent, so we've uh we've adjusted for those as well. Um also, a small increase we're anticipating for collection of prior even related taxes. This is the this is the chart that really um shows the pain that we all feel, right? So over the last ten years, uh the grants, that column, those three columns all the way to the left have continued to dwindle over time. This was the discussion that you all had at the at the tri board meeting with the Board of Ed and the Town Council. This is what precipitated the letter that some of you penned that your signature on to the state to say, hey, this has got to change. Uh but you can see uh those numbers have dwindled over time, uh and the only real way we can move ahead uh is to put that burden on us locally in our property taxes. So you see the impact of that over time. Last piece of the puzzle before we get to the page that says this is how much it costs is the grand list. Uh twenty twenty-three grand list, so the October twenty twenty-three, October one, twenty twenty-three value is what gets used to generate tax bills for the budget we're discussing right now. It's not a revaluation year, so it's just a standard uh catch-up year where if somebody built something, if somebody built a new house, they put an addition on their home, put a pool in their backyard, bought a new car, you know, all of those fun things. That sort of thing comes through in this particular um in this particular uh grand list year. Small increases that we've we have this year overall, the town's assessed value is one point two billion dollars, one point two-six billion dollars. That grew only in an in a gr- in a net way by about five point seven million dollars. It's a pretty small increase. We had about six point four million dollars in property tax, real property tax or real, rather, real estate uh growth. That's again, those new houses, new additions, et cetera, et cetera. We had about three point three million dollars in personal property growth. A lot of that is in commercials, so we had some businesses that invested in themselves, new equipment uh and those sorts of things. It's also in uh certain types of recreational equipment that we own as as community members uh and how that was uh changed, and so some of those uh changes came through. But that's offset by that drop in the value of motor vehicles that I mentioned before. Motor vehicles lost uh about four million dollars of value this year and really pulled back on what our overall grandest change was. If you look at that last line in my my write-up there, you'll see that the changes in the grandest, positives related to uh new things that didn't exist before and the minuses related to the change in motor vehicle, because remember, the tax is capped. So when the value drops, so does the amount that we collect. The value change there is about two hundred nineteen thousand dollars of new revenue to town. The rest of it, we have to figure out on our own. You see those two charts on the bottom. Not only does that show the dispersion uh of value, emphasis, of course, on real estate, but as you can see on the right-hand side, uh that the general uh over time increase in value uh of the community through growth and investment in itself. So here's that, the closing in on these last pages. There's that fifty-seven point seven million dollars of an overall budget. You have about a little over ten million dollars of non-tax revenues. Those are those grants and other operating cost revenues that we make. There is no use of surplus this year. There is no use of accumulated surplus uh available to use for the purposes of offsetting. So right now, we're looking at a need of property taxes of about forty-seven million dollars. Some of that is offset by the amount that we take in in motor vehicle tax. The balance of that is offset by property real estate tax. So the value of a mill, as we call it, the value of one uh one dollar on the mill rate is one million ninety-seven thousand dollars. So in order to accumulate the roughly forty-two million dollars of of real estate taxes that we need, the mill rate would be thirty-nine dollars and eleven cents. As you can see, it's an it's not an insignificant increase. That's a three dollar and change, three dollar and five cent increase in our mill rate. It's about eight point four-six percent. There's that number forty-two million or forty-two million nine hundred thousand dollars in uh personal property, real property tax levy, and then motor vehicles will contribute a four point seven million dollars. Their mill rate is capped there at the thirty-two forty-six. So those are generally my comments this evening. I'll just remind you all that not only in addition tonight, uh but you also have meetings the rest of the week at which the community can hear the discussion uh of of the individual departments as they communicate with you and you ask your questions uh as well. And then you have a few deliberations process-wise from here on out. After that, once you make a recommendation, Town Council gets a look at it and will uh go through its process. Now, William Creek don't rise sometime by June fifth. We're in front of the community on a referendum, and uh hopefully we have a budget shortly thereafter. There are questions. I'll certainly take them, but on the screen in front of you, you can see there are a number of options for people to provide comment and input. Not only uh coming to these meetings uh or uh presenting your comments here, you can send an email to budget@easthamptonct.gov. That goes to every one of you as well as the council and and others. Uh there is a new feature where an individual can record a video or an audio message uh through a link on the town's websites of the town's website, easthamptonct.gov. Right-hand side, there's a a column of of buttons, if you will. One of those says provide your video or audio input. And if you click there, you'll be prompted to record a message uh to the community uh which they will, uh which the community will see, the the members of the body will see. Of course, the old snail mail option here at the town hall, and everything related to the budget is online uh in the finance department section of the town's website. Uh not only are the is the budget policy statement there, but the various iterations of the budget are there uh as well as links to the education pieces of the budget uh so that someone can see them more easily. Otherwise, if there are no questions, I'll move forward to the superintendent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Evening.
So I know we are going to spend some good time together on Wednesday evening. Uh but I come to you and I'm excited to uh come to you with a little bit of good news. Uh but let me share some of the uh stressors uh with you first. Thank you, Jeff. So I know several of you have sat through our January and February meetings. You know that I presented a request for a six point two-one percent increase. And um obviously, that was based on information that we had in December. Uh Karen and I have to uh as we put the budget together in November, December, get something out to the board so they can have it to the town by March one. And uh February twenty-sixth, uh the board approved this uh budget. That's it? Yeah, that that's a hard slide to get past, I guess. Um so why is the education budget going up each year? And you know, if you've sat through my meetings and you've looked at comparisons around us, uh we are facing things that a lot of towns around us are are facing. We've gone from nine years ago when I presented my first budget uh to this this board, I was asking for a one point nine percent increase. And now I'm up to six point two-one percent. And I'm going to share with you, and I know that many of you were at the uh tri board meeting and heard me talk about this, but costs are rising and education funding is uh eroding while mandates are increasing. So I think this is an important slide, and I'm just going to take one minute to briefly review it. My very first budget that I presented for the two thousand sixteen-seventeen school year uh was asked for a one point nine percent increase. At the time, we were getting seven and a half million dollars uh in education cost share. And that seven and a half million dollars covered twenty-six percent of our budget. Nine budget later, nine budgets later to the right, um it only covers eighteen percent. And in fact, over those nine years, we've gone from seven and a half million down to a seven million dollar increase. Let's just say into the best of circumstances, the state would be covering us the same twenty-six percent. Uh that would be an ideal situation, that the state covered us twenty-six percent of our budget. If they were covering us twenty-six percent of our budget, that would be an additional two point two million dollars or the exact increase that I'm asking for this year. So you know, we're just seeing, you look at seven and a half million and seven million, dropping to seven million doesn't seem like that much. But that's seven and a half million dollars from nine years ago, certainly is different funds than just seven million dollars this year. That's the pressure point. Another pressure point is very similar to towns around us. In the blue numbers, you're seeing our special ed numbers uh go up and our outplace, number of outplacement students in yellow uh go up as well. We save money and I I I always take time to uh talk about this slide. In fact, I was talking to Jim uh this morning about this, and we'll we'll have more conversations about it. I credit Karen, Aceta, and our special ed director, Rod Bozier, for creating in-school programming, which is not only more beneficial to our students, but cost-effective. Were we not to have these four programs here, we would be paying a lot more. And we're fortunate that they are established programs. We even have a couple tuition students at these programs. So that the the graph that you see, and it's in the booklet that I've I've handed out to you, and if you don't, I'll bring it on Wednesday night. But the far-left black tall rectangle is what would we be, what we would be paying were we not to have these in-house programs. So roughly, our stars, I'm sorry, our stepped program, our ABA program, which deals uh supports students with with autism and other um needs, it cost us almost four million dollars if we did not have our in-school programming to outplace the students. Now it's just under two million dollars because of our of our program. The same with the star program, and I don't need to to go through this. We'll spend some time with this on uh Monday, sorry, Wednesday night. But you can see that we are that we are 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 doing well as far as in-house programming, to the point where these are towns around us, and this is the same twenty towns that I've compared ourselves to over the last nine budgets. They're similar to us in that they have no regional high school. They're local. Some are bigger, some are smaller. But this is this is a group of towns that are are within are within driving distance and fairly similar to us. Our support services, the budget money that goes towards support services, is twenty-four point nine percent compared to what other towns are paying. That's that's a nice number, and that because we're doing these programs in-house and not outplacing all the students. Uh we see that. So at the same time, we see a much higher percent of budget for instruction. Looking at the state average of sixty-two point eight, we're higher than that with sixty-six point five percent of our budget for instruction. So I never want us to feel like uh you know, our special ed students are are taking too much of our budget when you look at this compared to other towns. We're putting this, we're putting a fair amount of our budget towards instruction. I always like to share our per people expenditure. We don't need to spend top time talking to this, but you can see the same exact towns. Uh we're, you know, nestled in the middle with the towns that are paying about twenty thousand dollars per student. I also want to make sure that people understand what a return on investment that we have in in our district. You think these same twenty towns, we have a higher ratio of students per teacher than most of the towns. Now, this is not the class size. This includes all of the special ed teachers, the psychologists, the social workers. It includes the music teachers, the art teachers, et cetera. But it's roughly twelve point five students per teacher, which on this chart is 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 looking very good. And then you always hear that we have way too many administrators, but we are actually at the top of the chart, one hundred ninety-six point seven students per uh administrator. So the same So the same 20 towns. It would be hard to say compared to our local towns that we are heavy, heavy in administration. I also am proud of, this is a, a slide that I shared with the Board of Ed, because what we're, what we're seeing is families are questioning, do we need to send our children to obviously quality schools, but expensive schools outside of the state? And our students are enjoying a 97% admission to UConn. With that little black circle with the red arrow pointing at, this includes all the private schools and public schools in the state. So I'm proud to say that, you know, 97% admission rate to UConn is, is excellent. We're also, for some of the, the budget increases we're asking, we're still able to get some grants, Perkins Grant. And we are funding technology. We're funding high school manufacturing courses. We're funding, funding a, a new code platform for AP computer science and additional supplies for our engineering courses, which are also coming out of grants. I, I know that a lot of Board of Finance members are very interested in the manufacturing partnerships. We're at the point where EB is coming to beat our students at the end of April. And I believe in the next couple of weeks, EverSource is doing a career fair for our students. So we're really trying to make sure that those students who see themselves in a technical career have, have the options of what EB offers. We, we would love to have more students in the Ram partnership and the Goodwin partnership. But I think over time, they're going to see that, especially if we can get EB to come and sit on some of these technology classes and explain the advantages to, to students. So we're operating with a maintain but grow. We're not asking for any additional certified positions. We're going to utilize limited grant funding for innovation. You saw that on the last page. I just showed and I'll share that with you on Wednesday if you have questions. And then we're assessing and swapping budget funds to, to, to make things wherever we can put the dollar without asking for more. Basically, what I'm doing is we're flipping the page and what you see we have this year, except for what we can really fund through grants, we're not asking for next year. But here's the good news that I wanted to share with you tonight. And we can get deeper into this on Wednesday. Obviously, when Karen and I sit down and look at costs in December, it's now March. And so we have some updates that I'd like to share with you. For once, we have an insurance update. I know Bridgette always is asking me about insurance. And last year, we moved ourselves from the state partnership. We were able to join kind of an informal partnership with a broker that we have been dealing with. And it's more of an independent, smaller partnership. And we were able to save $250,000 last year, but we didn't know that till April. Now, because we're part of a smaller partnership, we have our renewal rates for this year. And Karen and I budgeted what they told us to budget. This group wants to keep us in because we talked about going back to the state partnership. We're looking at other options. They feel with a switch from Anthem to United Healthcare, no change in the program, just the carrier, which makes it very easy for me. We're dealing with our eight unions. We can save about $122,000. We got that information on March 1, was out to dinner with my wife. She doesn't like when I look at my email, but I'm glad I did because the dinner was excellent after that. So that's a $122,000 savings. There's a little risk because open enrollment with 400 employees, things can change quickly. But it's a risk we're willing to take. So the $122,000 prompted us to really look at all of our numbers in advance. The Board of Education will be accepting retirements on March 25th. Usually I would wait a little while, but because we're meeting with you on Wednesday, we had this meeting tonight. We know we're going to save about $102,000 in certified staff next year. I will require the principals, obviously, when someone retires a top step. For most of the jobs, I'm anticipating we can hire them at lower steps. French, our French teachers retiring. We know that we will not be able to replace that person with a step one French teacher. But for the other retirements, I'm anticipating about a $102,000 savings. Transportation is always a guess, but we are figuring we can save about $85,000 in transportation. It's a secure number now, but outplacements will impact that number. And we added more to repairs and maintenance in 24-25 because we froze the budget early this year. Steve Antonella has done a great job getting people to come and fix things for much less. This is a little bit risky reduction in his accounts because we held off a lot of work this year. It's a risk that we're just going to take. It's about a $359,333 savings. I want to make it clear that this does not impact any teaching positions. It won't impact class sizes. It doesn't impact existing programs. Now typically, when we look at a number like this, you've already given us a reduction. We wait April and May and we find out about certain things, especially insurance is always the linchpin here. But I thought, now that we know it, let's start your hard week just with a $359,000 savings. So that brings our 6.21 increase down to 5.21. It makes it a $1.8 million increase over the 2.2 billion. This is kind of a, I have this printed, this is just the, the, the total of the reductions. I can give you a, a copy of this later tonight or I'll be happy to bring it Wednesday. But I figure, let's have this now and you go home and sleep well and come back on Wednesday night knowing that we've, we've done some reductions. If you have any questions about these, I'd be glad to answer, but obviously we have a good chunk of time on Wednesday.
No, he just made me smile a whole lot.
Good, I'm glad, you know, my ninth and final budget, I'm looking for smiles this year. Thank you.
Could you go back one page?
Of course. Nope, I went ahead, sorry. Okay. Was that the page?
Yes, it is, it is. Thank you very much.
And I have this printed, I'll give you a copy at the end of the meeting.
Good, oh, good, thank you.
Anybody have any questions? Thank you, Paul. That was good news. Okay, next is public remarks. Anyone online, please raise your hand. Any comments or anybody want to say anything at this point or?
I'm a listener on Wednesday night.
Okay.
That's my comment.
So I guess if nobody's got any comments or questions, I have a motion to adjourn. So moved. All in favor?
I.
Thank you.